Right, good afternoon, early evening everybody and welcome to another exciting Audit and Standards meeting. The meeting is being held in the Council Chamber of Sheffield Town Hall. A few housekeeping notes, we do still have social distancing restrictions and other public health safety measures still apply, so please keep your distance from others, please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting, and if you do need to leave your seat, please ensure that you wear a mask. Hand sanitizer is also available for you to use over there in the corner. The toilets are outside on the corridor, ladies sort of down there around the corner and men's just out there to the right, and we're not aware of any planned fire alarms. Here he comes, stealing my thunder. Welcome councillor Clement Jones, your seat is here. So, as I said, there isn't a fire alarm planned, so if one does sound, it's the real thing. Please, can we exit the chamber and make our way back out of the building towards the nearest fire exit? So, it's the fire exit over there that we will use because that will lead down to the closed front doors. So, out is this one, and then there are steps straight down to the exit. So, now we do the introductions. So, I'm councillor Seanad Myer Richards and I'm the Chair of today's meeting. I'm sorry, for our viewers at home, we're waiting for councillor Clement Jones to be able to get his microphone working. It's just one of those days, isn't it, Simon? Who are you, Simon?
Thank you Chair, apologies for my lateness and out-of-breathness, I'm councillor Sean Clement Jones, Deputy Chair of this committee.
Welcome. Councillor Josie Pachek.
Councillor Angela Ardenio.
Marouf.
Councillor Mohamed Marouf.
And Alison.
Alison Howard, independent co-opted member.
Sorry, we'll go through the officers who are here, so here is...
Thank you, Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance. Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager, Internal Audit Risk Management and External Funding.
Jo Cairns, independent member person, sorry.
Colleen Byggs-Paul, Service Delivery Manager, Customer Services.
Jenny Callahan, Complaints Manager, Customer Services.
Hayley Clark, External Audit. Alan Dawson from External Audit.
David Phillips, Head of Strategic Finance.
Jervell, Committee Secretary.
The person who is working all this stuff down there so that we're able to have this meeting and that the public are able to watch us. So, if we go on to the agenda, we've done that, but apologies for absence. Can you switch your mic off, please? Or is it...
Right, so received apologies from councillors David Barker and Ben Corrigan.
And we also just thought to say, welcome back Angela, having had Covid, and we're glad to see that you're in the pink again. Declarations of interest. None, okay. Minutes of the previous meeting, if I just go through them for accuracy and then any matters arising, so page nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. So, can we accept the minutes as a true record, please? Yep, and then for any matters arising, page nine, page 10, page 11, I had one which was 6.4, which was the Fraud Awareness e-Learning course, and we had expressed, I think, as members that we'd really like that course to be mandatory, and I think, Linda, did you have a response for that for us?
Yeah, I've been in discussions with the Director of Legal and Governance, and I think the way forward to propose that's agreement with the Audit Standards Committee that we want it mandating, then what I can do is take that paper to the Performance Leadership Board and raise it there, so, and then hopefully we can get a decision to move it to mandatory. So, we'll try that route, if that's an agreement.
Okay, can I ask colleagues, are they in agreement that we think that should be mandatory? Angela, did you... No, that's... Thank you. Page 12 and page 13. Okay, that completes the minutes, so our next item is item six, the final accounts audit process. We have a letter here, and we also have two colleagues from Ernst Young who have come to talk to their paper, so welcome, and if one of you would like to kick off?
Thanks very much Chair. So, yes, we put together a very brief paper just to explain to you where we are in the audit process for the 2021 Statement of Accounts. So, if I just talk to you very briefly about the work that we're doing on the Financial Statements Audit, and obviously you can see from our paper, we're somewhat behind where we would like to be, we have been suffering from some shortages of staff due to sickness. However, Hayley and I have been working very closely with the rest of our team to try and move some of our staffing around, and actually we're making some good progress on that. So, we are hopeful that we will be able to progress pretty quickly over the next five or six weeks to move through that work. However, I do want the committee to note that that is subject to all of that staffing working and that we're able to move through the work and we don't find any issues or have any other delays. So, we have made the point that we are hopeful of reporting into the December meeting, however that is at risk at the moment, so I just want the committee to be aware of that. I'll just pass over to Hayley to have a brief word about the value for money work that we've done to date.
Thank you, yes, so what we've also included in the report is an update on the Value for Money Risk Assessment. So, when we presented the audit plan to you back in July, we highlighted that that process was still underway, and really what we wanted to confirm is that we've now worked through that process, and the risks that we identified at that stage are still consistent with what we are now finding. So, they're around financial sustainability, and then we've got some around the regeneration programmes as well. The work that we've completed on that to date is progressing, we currently have no significant issues that we want to bring to your attention in relation to the arrangements for 2021, and as we've highlighted in the report, we are working very closely with management on how the situation, and I suppose the financial situation is progressing for 2021/22.
Thank you. I know you want to ask a question, Simon, but I'm going to go first. I just wanted to ask Gillian, under Value for Money, paragraph two, about the new sub-risks, and obviously this paper comes to us here, I'm not sure of where the information also goes within the council such that the sub-risk of governance arrangements and the sub-risk of the financial sustainability, who are those communicated to? I assume it doesn't just come to us, it goes to other people? I just wanted to... Sorry Chair, could I pass this to Dave? I think Dave perhaps, is that okay? Sorry, I think Dave can probably answer it better than Alcat. It's all right.
Thanks Chair, yes, in addition to this committee here, the risks were also included in the audit plan, and they're also discussed with a range of officers, in particular Eugene as Exec Director of Resources for any members of public and the Chief Executive. So, the auditor has met with the Chief Executive three or so weeks ago now and went through the whole range of things, what the audit was covering, but also the risks and things. So, they're thoroughly talked through with officers. In terms of the member group, this is the group that oversees the audit, and as you'll know, there is some national discussion about whether, in fact, things need to be highlighted more statitarily to full council and things, but we're not quite in that position yet. So, at the moment, this is the member group that gets the notice of these and then gets the conclusion of the audit findings, but I may change at some stage in the future.
Oh, here comes Eugene. Shall I let him sit down before we ask him about this? Simon, I think you have a question.
More than one, hopefully Chair, if you will allow. I mean, really, I'd just like to, obviously this is a couple of paragraphs in this letter, and you use the phrase significant weaknesses, I'm wondering if that's a... I don't know, if you discuss the language you were going to use or whatever, but that sounds quite serious to me, and whether that's a, you know, if there's a statutory, you know, significant weaknesses, terrible weaknesses, awful weaknesses, I don't know where it lies on that sort of scale. But also, obviously, it was something we identified before, and I'm wondering, I don't know, if there's any, well, if there are any actions identified when it was first, when it was first identified as a risk that we've taken, so hopefully kind of avoid some of this risk or reduce it.
So, on the first point around the wording, that's the terminology that comes from the guidance, so we're required as part of the risk assessment process to identify any risks to significant weaknesses. So, at this stage, we aren't saying that there are significant weaknesses, they're just the areas where we feel that they may be more susceptible to there being a significant weakness. On the second point, you're right, they are areas that we would have identified in previous years. Now, clearly, each year is slightly different, and particularly in relation to the regeneration programmes, if I take Westbar as an example, last year when we looked at that, we were very much looking at it in the very early stages around some of the decision-making that was being put in place by you as an organisation. Clearly, in this financial year, we've, I suppose what we're looking at is how has that developed as that transaction's progressed, and therefore what are the additional governance arrangements you've put in place as you've gone forward and made a decision to enter into those transactions?
Eugene, I've given you a chance to sit down and take some breath, do you want to add anything, or are you happy with what Dave said earlier?
Not quite sure what Dave said, but in terms of what Hayley said, I'd absolutely agree, I would expect this to be near, we go through this process every year, and actually it's a dialogue we have with our external auditors where, you know, we don't just sit there waiting for external audit either to kind of spot significant risks, we have a proactive conversation where we talk about some of these things, and, you know, the things identified there are two significant transactions that I would expect to be on any self-respecting external auditor's list of things to look at, and I welcome that because that's part of the scrutiny and governance we have through an external audit function. Thanks.
Does anybody else... Marouf.
Thank you Chair, I'm particularly concerned about the Westbar and Heart of the City issue, and I think I've raised this on many, many occasions since I've been elected, that I have concerns in particular around Westbar, and I'm very pleased that the external auditors have picked up on this, but previously when I've asked this question, I've always been told that it's very robust, things are happening, stop messing us about, you're shell-boating and all this sort of stuff. But clearly, there is a concern there, and one of the questions that I want to ask, whether it's really in the public domain or not, I did have a quick conversation with Dave, and apparently it may well be, that we as a city council are probably signing a 25-year lease for 100,000 square feet of office space in there, at a time when office space is not as popular as it used to be, particularly post-Covid. And even if we use the basic figures, and I've used figures before, and I'm just using these as just examples, they're not actual value figures, but even if you use £15 a square foot, the city council is exposing itself to 1.5 million pounds per annum rental, and that if you equate it over 25 years without rent reviews involved in it, that's 37 and a half, 40 million pounds, that if everything went pear-shaped and we had another pandemic and nobody took a single square foot of office space, that the city council will still be responsible for paying it. I accept the fact that we probably wouldn't get into that situation, and there will be times when there will be vacancies there, but we have to pick up the cost of the rental if we don't get a tenant, a sub-tenant, and I was told at the time in Economic and Environmental Wellbeing Committee that this, we expected there to be a profit rent, but looking at the marketplace as it stands at the present time, a lot of incentives have been given to people to move into office space, in particular when you're talking about 100,000 square feet, which is quite a significant amount of office space. So, I do have my concerns about that, and when I raised it previously, and it's not just on one occasion Chair, it's many occasions I've raised this, I said, can we actually see this? What are the figures that you've actually been using to justify the members agreeing to signing a 25-year lease for 100,000 square feet of office space in today's climate? And if the answer is that we want to pump-prime redevelopment in the city, I don't have a problem with that, because we're an authority that we're 44 million pounds in deficit, and we're potentially exposing ourselves to millions of pounds worth of possible debt in the future, and I'm not going to touch on other debt that we've had in the past, but this smacks to me of something, if you're partially involved in property in any way, that this is a significant risk, and if, as I said earlier, if it is something that we need to pump-prime to regenerate an area, I really don't have a problem with that, if people would just admit it and say, look, there is a risk there, and there's a significant risk there, and whether the auditors have picked up on that side of things, I'm not quite sure, but we as members certainly need to pick up on that, and if it is to pump, as I say, pump-prime the area, to reintroduce regeneration into the area for the overall benefit of the city, I understand that, but then to justify it on the grounds that the figures that we've been given are robust and correct, I would stand up and argue that all day long and say, it's not, because the city doesn't need that many, the city's got surplus office space as it stands, and I can argue that case on a regular basis, if somebody wants to argue that with me, but I still feel there is a significant thing... There is an issue missing in the Westbar deal that we as members need answers to before we sign something as significant as that off. And in Westbar, sorry, on the Heart of the City, yes, there's a changing retail world out there, and we don't know how it's going to end up, clearly there are risks there and you've picked up on those, and quite rightly so, and as Eugene said, you would pick up on those sort of risks, but these are fairly significant risks, and when we're already 44 million pounds potentially in deficit, to add another 60, 70, 80 million pounds over two developments, and say that this is actually robust and washes its face, I don't buy that Chair at all. So, there's certain questions in there and certain statements which, if you, I'd like to feel more comfortable about those two. Thank you Chair.
See if Eugene can make you feel more comfortable.
I think I'd start by saying, what I've said before, which is, no one's trying to hide the fact that we've taken two significant decisions there, and actually, there is a report to Cabinet about the Westbar proposal that has a significant amount of information in, that actually includes words from me around the risk around what we were entering at the time. So, that decision went through, could have been subject to scrutiny, et cetera, et cetera. So, and the fact that these risks are highlighted here is not because the auditors have suddenly found something that isn't explicitly set out in reports we've done to Cabinet, and we've had two reports to Cabinet on Heart of the City. As I said, I welcome that scrutiny because they are significant, and just to pick up on a few points, those decisions are taken, those numbers are included in our medium-term financial position, so the decisions are not on top of the position, and we are in a difficult financial position now, but they are included within that position. And actually, if you look at Heart of the City as a taken example, we've got a 400 million pound scheme, that because of the way we've done it and the risk mitigation and the way we've done it on a block-by-block basis, the costs of that whilst a risk are included in our medium-term financial strategy, and because of the way we've done the scheme, there is a marginal effect in our overall medium-term financial position, there is not, as in some other authorities, and I've said this before here, a number of other authorities have taken significantly risky decisions about property investments, including investing outside of the city, and doing things that frankly amount to speculation that are now coming back to bite them. We have absolutely not done that, we have taken a very limited focused approach to where we enter property deals, they are all in city, we have, unlike a lot of other authorities, not entered into a lot of lease wraps that other authorities have done, we have done these two significant schemes and others, but that's exactly the point, we focused that risk, and then we put programmes of management in place that mitigate that risk, and actually, despite the pandemic which has changed the composition and the time at which we could deliver Heart of the City to the timescales we said, we're still managing that risk and it's in our numbers. So, but I'm more than happy for that to be scrutinised and reviewed again, because as I said, actually, you're right, it is really significant, and I'm more than welcome members asking questions and having more awareness of that, that's actually the point, it's the point of this committee, so that's fine, but I just kind of want to kind of just make it clear that, you know, we have been through a decision process, that there is information in the public domain, and we can review it again, it's fine.
Thank you Eugene, do you feel slightly more comfortable now?
Not entirely, I can understand where Eugene is actually coming from, I have actually read that report, and I did question it at the time as well, that I didn't agree with certain things in that report, and I continue not to agree with them. I would suggest that in this scrutiny committee that we do bring Westbar back to this committee to scrutinise further, I'm not entirely comfortable with these two deals at all.
I'm not sure of whether that's us or whether it's a scrutiny committee, but I'm sure this will run and run, Marouf. My other concern was that you were conflating it with the in-year deficit we have at the moment, which I think is very different, possibly due to the effects of austerity, which we're all very, very aware of from the last 10 years, and the underfunding in general of local government. Really good article in The Guardian today by, I think it's Frances Ryan, really recommend it, looking at the way that local government has been so underfunded in the last 10 years. Right, are there any other questions? No? Okay, in that case. Thank you for bringing your report, and I know that you've both got journeys to go on now, so I know you'd like to stay for the rest of the agenda, but if you'd like to sneak off now, that's absolutely fine with the rest of us. Unless, did you have any other comments actually on... No? Okay then, thank you for coming, and see you soon, I hope. I think also, something that Dave raised was that it would be very useful if we were to have a session with you two for maybe an hour with just the committee members, just to be able to talk to you with our officers, where we can all be free and frank together, and I'm sure that Marouf would appreciate that especially. Okay. So, thank you. Okay, so, next item is Agenda Item Seven, and is that you, Colleen? Sorry, do you know, I've got my very focals on and I can't quite read yours, apologies.
That's all right, that is our item, and I'm just going to hand over to my colleague, Jenny Callahan, who has helped prepare the report, and she'll take you through the presentation, which is also on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, so, come back again this year, obviously with the Ombudsman's Annual Report, it's inquiries and investigations during 2021. So, obviously, you've got the report in full, but what I'll do is I'll kind of just focus on headlines from the report. Just a couple of things to highlight upfront, is that we would normally have an annual letter or an annual report from both ombudsmen, the local government and social care ombudsman and the housing ombudsman. Unfortunately, the housing ombudsman annual report is late, it's been delayed and won't be published until January, but you have got a copy of the local government and social care ombudsman at Appendix Three. Also, to just highlight as usual, that the figures that we report and record locally do differ from what the ombudsmen kind of report when they're issuing their letters and reports, and that's mainly due to the fact that they don't always share all the contacts that they receive, particularly over the telephone where they're just giving advice, so I figure their figures do tend to be a little bit higher. So, just to talk through in terms of the headlines, in terms of numbers, you'll see that there's been a significant decrease in terms of ombudsman activity compared with previous year, 80 complaints, which is 47% down on previous year. The largest number of complaints that we received in 2021 were adult social care planning and housing and neighbourhood services. Adults continues to be the highest area, and that's not surprising because adults' statutory social care complaints process is a one-stage process, so it is an automatic, you know, natural progression to go to the ombudsman there. As we've highlighted before, a lot of ombudsman inquiries do conclude without a formal investigation, 73% were concluded without one, and of those that were formally investigated, the highest numbers we saw were around adult social care and housing and neighbourhood services. So, looking at the figures that the ombudsman, the LGSCO has reported, they've got 95 complaints and inquiries received, and again, you can see that's a significant decrease in what we've seen in previous years. Looking at response timeliness and response times, the council's average response times to formal inquiries, well, there's 24 initial formal inquiries, there's 29 working days, 71 meeting the original or formal agreed extended response deadline, so just to highlight there that during last year, the ombudsmen were very flexible in terms of, you know, agreeing revised timeframes on cases, that has now ended, and we're back to kind of business as usual, and we're working to the 15 working day and 20 working day target that's set by the ombudsman. There were unfortunately some late kind of responses, and that was due to late incomplete service comments and information, and of the seven that went over time scale, they were a couple in adult social care, a couple in children's social care, and three in housing and neighbourhood services. From an outcome perspective, we had 18 complaints upheld overall, and at Appendix B of the report, there's quite a detailed summary of all the upheld complaints, including all the remedies and service improvements that were agreed. The ombudsman issued two public reports during the year, one around the removal and replacement of trees, and the other one was an S E N one, it also had an element of us not overseeing appropriately some alternative education provision in that case. You'll be aware that both of those public reports went to what was then Cabinet and have been kind of scrutinised through that process, and all the kind of action plans that were arising from those cases are kind of published as part of the Cabinet process. In terms of financial remedies, obviously we try and put customers back in the place they should have been without fault, but sometimes we are left with only being able to kind of resolve things through a financial remedy, we paid just short of 27,000 in compensation and other reimbursements, which is slightly up on what we paid previous year. The next slide kind of just gives some examples of wider learning, obviously Appendix B, it's detailing that there were lots of individual remedies on cases and lots of kind of, perhaps, you know, individual staff practice... and lots of kind of perhaps, you know, individual staff practice training issues. But these are just some of the more wider learning kind of examples that came out of the Ombudsman complaints. I'll not read them all out, but just a couple. We had some issues obviously around timeliness with the children's statutory social care process. So there's been a lot more guidance and reminders issued throughout the service about that. And again, following on from the public report on the SEN case, you know, the action plan that had been developed the previous year around alternative education provision was kind of reviewed and revisited as a result of that particular complaint. The report does include some benchmarking information, which kind of just gives you a bit of a feel for how we're comparing with other authorities. But the Local Government and Social Care Ombudsman does helpfully kind of issue some kind of performance data and some comparative data with similar authorities. So you can see that they upheld 71% of complaints about Sheffield and that's just slightly below the 72% of similar authorities. In 12% of the upheld cases, they actually found that Sheffield had satisfactorily remedied the complaint before the Ombudsman got involved. And again, that's slightly above the average of the 11%. We're more or less there and we've got 100% compliance rate with recommendations. The next slide really goes into what we've achieved over the last 12 months and what the future developments are. So we've maintained the statutory complaint handling during the year despite all the disruptions to service delivery and remote working. We've focused on introducing a more robust sign process around formal Ombudsman investigations and that's leading really to improving quality and timeliness. We completed a self-assessment against the Housing Ombudsman's Complaint Handling Code and that's been published on the council's website. And complaints really, a overhaul of the complaints process included in the one-year plan now. We've got the complaint project, which is coming, we're going live on the 1st of November. This is where we've developed a new case management recording system on our CRM system. So we're introducing a fresh approach to management and handling of complaints and wants to become a more listening, learning organisation. Alongside the system side and the changes that we're bringing in there, we've reviewed all the accompanying information and guidance that's available to employees and managers around resolving, investigating, reviewing and responding to complaints. And moving forward, that, all those changes and improvements will link to what we hope will be like a performance framework, including some dashboards, you said we did. So in terms of recommendations, I apologise, a couple of those have been left on from the previous meeting, but it's just the one for you, which is obviously to consider this report and obviously offer your view on any of the issues that it raises.
Thank you, Jenny. Ooh, his hand's going up. So I'm going to ask Josie and then Angela and then Simon. Ooh, right, okay, Josie first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking at the agreed remedy and service implications and some of the length of time it takes to apologise. Because a lot of the time when people go through these processes, it's not necessarily that they want compensation, they actually want acknowledgement that there's been a problem and an apology. And some of the apologies sort of take two months, three months. And there's one there without a time period. I just wonder if we're going to apologise to somebody if we can't reduce that time scale at all? Because it's almost adding insult to injury that there's something gone wrong, it's been acknowledged it's wrong, but it's taking two or three months to then write to them. Because if people are sort of an anxious sort of personality, the fact that they're still waiting another two or three months to actually close something down could actually make it worse for them. To Chair.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of apologies, what you sometimes do find is that when we've dealt with the complaint locally, there has been some level of apology already given. I think, is it in terms of what the Ombudsman's recommended? Obviously, they will find perhaps wider fault and want us to be more specific in terms of what that apology encompasses. And usually the timeframe around the apologies is much shorter than that. Usually when we're talking about months, it's usually the more wider learning aspect. So we don't hold off from doing the whole remedies that are linked to a particular case. We usually, you know, usually we're getting on quickly with payments and apologies within a matter of a couple of weeks. And then we're following that up with perhaps some of the wider learning actions where we're given a longer time period.
Angela.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, in terms of the reduction in the complaints that have gone to the Ombudsman, I assume that Covid has had something to do with that. I remember when we had this last year, I think it was that meeting where I said that I tried to complain to Sheffield City Council and it's so difficult to do it online. And then I tried to complain in Nottingham and it was very easy. So I wonder whether we don't get complaints because people just cannot be bothered to do it. And I know that I have, in the last 18 months, put three complaints through on behalf of constituents that couldn't get through to someone to complain. They were all resolved, you know, informally. It wasn't huge things, but there is an issue with actually being able to complain to Sheffield City Council. So we need to acknowledge that, I think, because lots of things, I think, slip through the net. And in terms of the trees, although, you know, we, the council has apologised, I don't think that that apology has been received as unreserved by people who are actually threatened with prison, including one of my colleagues. So I think we have a problem with communication as well because it hasn't come, I mean, people have not forgotten and I think we need to do better. Because that whole episode is a stain on the reputation of Sheffield City Council. People know about Sheffield in other countries because of that. And I would rather that people knew about Sheffield because it's such a fantastic place and so friendly and green and beautiful. And, you know, rather than that episode. So I don't, you know, I don't totally agree with the how it's been written up in the report.
Angela, can I just come in there, sorry? When you say that people don't feel that they've had an unreserved apology, is that because you don't think it was said unreservedly? Or what could have been done better there, Angela?
I think it didn't come across as sincere, to be honest. I wasn't involved, I think I went on a couple of demos personally, but I am close to people who were very involved. And obviously I speak to lots of people that were involved. And I think most people just that were heavily involved, especially the people who were involved in the court case, don't feel that that apology was actually sincere. They feel that that apology was just done because they, you know, the then leader of the council was told that they had to do it because of the Ombudsman report, not because they wanted to. So I think there is a difference there. It was done, it felt that it was done under duress rather than because it was sincere.
Well, I'm very sorry about that and I'm very happy to express here an unreserved apology to all those people who took part in the campaigns. I think it's something that I think wasn't just shown, but I think the fact that we now have a working relationship with people going forward, I hope that that will show the sincerity of the council. And I hope as a councillor, you will tell people how sincere it is going forward, certainly, Angela. I recognise what you're saying. Sorry, carry on Jenny.
I mean, in terms of the lower numbers that you mentioned, I do, obviously I take that point in that there has been some difficulties in people getting through on the telephone and Covid and remote working, obviously, I mean, it's difficult, isn't it? Because it may be just people have had a lot of other things going on and have just not complained as well. We've, you know, we've seen a kind of reduction across the board. In terms of obviously the Ombudsman activity and the reduction there, I mean, that's obviously partly due to the fact that particularly the Local Government and Social Care Ombudsman closed their doors effectively for a period at the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, I don't think it accounts for the reduction rate, but that obviously contributed. And I think it's fair to say that both Ombudsmen have kind of got backlogs of cases as well and they're still, you know, so we've not probably had the volume coming through. So that probably does account for part of the explanation around the Ombudsman activity. I mean, in terms of the tree situation, obviously, you know, in terms of my role, you know, it was obviously to kind of oversee the council's response to that Ombudsman report. And I know there was like a public apology issued, you know, on the website and everything. And obviously my role was to kind of feed back to the Ombudsman whether they were satisfied with the action that was taken. And obviously, you know, they obviously said they were and that we'd complied with their recommendations.
Sorry, yes, hang on a minute, Alison, did you want to come back again or were you? Okay, let me bring Alison in.
Can I ask a question about the telephone response times and also the response times to comments or complaints put through on the council's website? And have they changed over the course of the pandemic?
I think you have got another item on the agenda around contact centre performance. You might want, I think Mark Bennett will be dealing with that. I mean, in terms of the website, I think we're aware that there's development work to do. I don't know, Colleen, if you want to come in here.
Yeah, I would, thank you. I think I'd like to acknowledge Council Angela Argentio, sorry, comments about not being, it not being easy for people to make a complaint. And that's something that we have acknowledged and that's something that the CRM Complaints Project that goes live or begins, if you like, from the 1st of November this year, will address and we're committed to addressing. So that's not only implementing a new system for the staff to make it easier for them to handle and manage complaints, but it's also the next phase, which begins in December of this year, is to look at that online journey for customers. We're actually even going to create a customer panel to run alongside that phase of the project. So they get real people who are trying to make real complaints, testing out the process, testing out the existing journey and helping us change that. So we're committed to having people from all of the PC cohorts of customers to make sure that it's accessible from their views as well. So you're right, we do need to make things better and simpler and easier. And also we need to become what I would call more professional and prioritise complaints. And that's what this project is about. Our sponsor is Jill Duckworth and we're committed to making that change. And we want to become, we will become more listening and learning.
Would it be possible, you say you're going to be using real live complainants? Would it be possible for a councillor to also observe how? I was going to pick somebody else, Angela. Would it be possible to have a councillor observe it? If it's not about confidentiality or maybe have a councillor who is trying to take somebody through the complaints process to be part of it, just so that they can tell us what it felt like as well, is that a possibility?
Absolutely, and you'll be pleased to know that we'll also be looking at your processes. The member inquiry and complaints processes as part of that phase as well. So yeah, we welcome it and we really want to make it right, but we want to make it right from the customer's perspective, not what we think.
Do I have any volunteers? Right, I think councillor Argentio, did you want to do it as well, Josie?
Could I suggest that Colleen ask the co-execut member about that? Would that be okay, Chair?
Thank you. I'm sure she'll welcome it. Another question, Angela. Okay, Simon.
Thank you, Chair, a comment and then a question if I may. In terms of this report, the last, report for last, very much was a bit of a disaster for the SEND in terms of, you know, it just showed the problems that we had and obviously they've built up to that point. And really this is just to say that thank you to the officers who came for us and were absolutely open and honest about the issues and came up with a plan. And from what I can see and from what I can hear, you know, the plan is, the plans are working and we are serving our children much better. So thank you to everybody who's been involved in that and obviously I think hopefully this shows the results. We don't know, but I say hopefully this does show the results. So the second thing is really about the Housing Ombudsman. I think probably looking forward to it is not the phrase I should use, but perhaps concerned about it from my own experiences. So I'm just wondering if you have any idea if we've seen a similar drop in terms of reports to the Ombudsman that we've seen, to the Housing Ombudsman, as we've seen in this? If you have any idea of those numbers to give us a flavour perhaps of what we might be looking forward to or not?
I mean, what I've included in these figures, it does include what we've received and what we've recorded locally. But yeah, I think we are seeing lower numbers. I mean, in terms of the Housing Ombudsman's Annual Report, what we got last year was like a first annual report that we'd actually received for the council. It was very minimal in terms of a few pie charts and numbers. So I'm thinking they may be developing that and that might explain partly the delay. So we may get something a little bit more in detail in January, eh? But obviously that's something we can share with you when it comes through, if it highlights any kind of issues that aren't being brought out by this particular report now.
Thank you. I think the only question I had was about incomplete service comments. It's on page 23, 4.3. And I was just concerned that officers are taking your requests seriously enough and I'm not sure at which level it goes in. But I do want you to feel that you have the support of councillors certainly or senior officers to make sure that the information you request is always given to you, however uncomfortable it may be.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It is a challenge sometimes and obviously we do appreciate that, you know, complaints, Ombudsman inquiries, it's fitting it in amongst, you know, the rest of the day job, if you like. But, you know, when we get to an Ombudsman inquiry, you know, it's the highest risk in terms of complaint handling. And, you know, it does need to be given a level of priority. What we've focused on this year particularly is that sign-off process within portfolios. So there's a lot more kind of scrutiny at exec director level now, which is holding, you know, services more to account and supporting us in doing that. So that's bringing about, you know, helping with quality and timeliness. But I think you're right in terms of there's potentially still a training or a guidance or a directive missing there in terms of, you know, that accountable manager in the complaints process and making sure that when we're getting these inquiries through, the information is being sent to us in a timely way and we're getting the level of detail that we need and the supporting evidence that goes with it. So myself, you know, myself and colleagues, we have been talking to Ellen D about what that might look like in the future. Colleen, have you got anything you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We have acknowledged again that there is a gap in the training, particularly for accountable managers. We deal well with problem solving, if you like, at the door entry, if you like, to resolve complaints at the first point of contact. We train well on that. We also train well for investigating managers, but perhaps there is a gap for accountable managers. Not only to help them know what their responsibility is and why they should be accountable and why it matters to customers, but also to make sure that they can lead their service and, you know, transmit that same urgency in the tiers below, if you like. So this is something that we really want to look at in our next phase as well, moving on. And I just want to say that this And I just want to say that this project isn't, you know, something that's going to stop. It's a culture change really that needs to carry on, doesn't it? So these are all elements that we hope to include as we move through. So in the new year, twenty twenty-two, we'll be working with LND to create this new course. Thank you.
Jill, do you want to just say something about the project? You're the guru for it.
Yes, I can do. Yeah, the project initiation, if you will, was around replacing the system. The system has not really served us as we would have liked it to. So it was, the starting point with it was a new system. However, we, what myself and Colleen have done is made sure that it's more than just introducing a system because this is a really integral part of our communication with the citizens. So we've worked hard to make sure that that's about what the front page looks like, if you will. What our, how our staff interact with it and interact with customers, what sort of learning and developments available to them. We've made it very much, this process, you know, the processes around it are not just about how you feel, how you put information into a system, but about how you might have a conversation with someone to try and resolve their issue at an early point. Picking up, I think, the point that Josie made earlier about that, sometimes you just need, the people just need an early conversation in order to resolve an issue. And so it's kind of a, as Colleen said, it's more of a cultural change and a cultural issue for us. It's not going to be something that we can do overnight, but we are making a good start on it. And, you know, the intention is there, involving the public in it, making sure that we're not doing it just to suit officers or councillors or, you know, as generally, this is something that will generally or should, the intention is that we are helping citizens. It's complaints, but actually this isn't about complaints, is it? The idea is we get to a point where we don't have any complaints, ideally, you don't want complaints. But, but, you know, we're realistic here, we deliver a wide range of services and there will always be complaints. So we need to make sure that those people have as much attention as we can give them quickly and resolve their issues. And then that any focus that needs to be put on major issues can go to that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, we'll look forward to hearing how it has all progressed. Sorry, just finally on page thirty-nine, the second paragraph in the letter from the local government ombudsman. He says that they want to use the rich evidence of their casework to identify authorities that need support to improve their complaint handling. And also then to, I think, have a bank of knowledge and look at the way they work and to sort of give advice and support. And I just think we would really welcome that, I'm sure that all local authorities will. So if you hear anything that we can help them in that, please let us know, that's just really interesting.
Oh, yes, I've thought of something else as well. One of the main things here is the learning from it. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's the important thing that actually that the ombudsman and this committee, myself as monitoring officer, are actually interested in. What have we learnt from the complaint, the outcome from the complaint? And how is that being translated back into the organisation so that it doesn't happen again? And that closing the loop is also something that we're working into to this process.
Thank you. Well, thank you both for coming. It's, you know, we're the committee that really cares about this and is very interested in it. So we look forward to seeing you again with progress. Can I also, sorry, quickly ask, when are we expecting the housing ombudsman's report?
January, eh, they said they'll be publishing their report in January, eh?
Okay, so can we put it on the January agenda if it comes in time? Thank you. We're moving on to item eight, which is about our customer services contact centre performance. And this is Mark Islett, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, good evening, members. So this is, I'm here to give you an overview of a report the committee requested, which is a summary of the performance of the call volumes across the various different strands of the customer contact centre. I think I'd start by saying despite having a really dedicated and hardworking team who've coped incredibly well during the pandemic, our recovery and adaptation to different, different interactions with customers has meant that the performance across most strands of the contact centre is not where it needs to be. We are underperforming and we have got ground to cover. That means that people that are trying to make contact with the council are not getting through or having to wait to get through, which is, as we all know and we all accept, is just not an acceptable position. The report does give an overview of what some of these, what some of the issues are. Some of those things that have impacted upon performance relate to the contact centre picking up new areas of work, issues around recruitment, training new staff and difficulties in terms of kind of running induction for new staff in the way that we have in the past. I think it's also fair to say that the connections that the contact centre need to have with other services to be able to respond to queries. I think some of those connections have changed during the pandemic and I think we've got more work to do in terms of kind of re-establishing some of those connections. The report does highlight in terms of the October performance that there are some potential green shoots of improvement, but equally I would want to be realistic in terms of, we know that actually some of those strands of the contact centre where we're getting somewhere nearer to what the performance target actually is, are also the same strands that often come under pressure as we move into some of the winter months. So we've got some challenging times ahead of us. The report does set out some of the work that we have done and where we're on with to improve performance. And some of the short term issues that we are putting in place to try and respond to some of the pressures and to improve the performance. As well as some longer term future potential developments that the contact centre are currently exploring. I think it would be fair to say that any improvement that the contact centre need to make do need to be seen in a wider organisational context. I came along to an hour council transitional committee last week to talk about customer experience and some of the more strategic things that we need to, we need to grapple with as an organisation in terms of fundamentally changing our approach. Listening to the previous presentation and thinking about the complaints process, that's exactly the kind of approach that we need to, we need to take in terms of improving performance on some of the other areas. You know, we need to be directly connecting with customers, with residents, with citizens, understanding what it is they need from us. Working out how best they can interact through the website, through email or telephony, and then designing services around that. That said, you know, as Jill said, as Colleen said, these are cultural changes and they will take some time. And we need to do something in the short term to improve performance. Some of the measures that the report highlights in paragraph five will hopefully start to make some of those short term improvements.
Thank you. I have Angela and then I have Josie and then Maruth.
Thank you, Mark, for the report, thank you for bringing it. It doesn't make very pretty reading, I've got to say. And having so personal experience of dealing with the telephony system at council through work, it's very frustrating. The reason why I asked for this to be brought to this committee is because over the last eighteen plus months, I think all of us councillors have had people contacting us, sometimes very distressed people that have been trying in vain to get through to council and they haven't been able to. And the waiting times for getting through to someone over the phone are really, really long. It was the day of last council meeting, I work on a Wednesday morning and I was trying to get through to housing, to revenue and benefits. And I was on the phone for fifty-seven minutes before I finally put the phone down because I had to come to council meeting. So, you know, we, we can all experience it, you can try any number, you know, any of the departments. You have to wait for a long time. At one point, twenty-eight minutes was just the random. And it doesn't even tell you which place you are in the queue, so necessarily, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And, you know, when you do get through, people are really lovely and they try their best. During the eighteen months, I have lost count of how many people have asked for help with the parking permits renewal. And obviously, when they contact their councillor, they bypass the call centre. And the parking services department are brilliant, they just get on with it and they do it straight away. But the issue remains of the fact that, you know, there was a, there was an emergency, there was a pandemic. And yes, things weren't going to be the same. However, you know, this is worse than I was expecting. And my, I have sort of a question about why is it that revenue and benefits is the one that is the hardest? Because it's got the worst performance. That's the one I've dealt with, which is quite disappointing, I wish it was one of the others. And, you know, what are we doing to remedy it? And you said that we have to change the approach. And, you know, I totally agree with that, but how, my question is how are we going to do it? And what is the timeframe? Because when I was first elected, I was, I think it was December of the January, so it was December two thousand and nineteen, January two thousand and twenty, can't remember which committee, which meeting it was. But we had a very similar conversation then about the new telephony system, about improving the system about. So we have had these conversations and I'm sure they've happened in the past, we can always improve. But it's got to get to the point where we can have customer assurance that when they ring the council, they can speak to someone in a timely manner. Because people don't have an hour to spare to speak to parking permits, parking services. So why is the, in particular, the revenue and benefits that are underperforming? I mean, all the departments are underperforming, but that one in particular. How are we going to change things? How are we, you know, what's the timeframe? Can we have a timeframe, can we have a plan? And also some of the, one of my worries is about staff that work in call centres. Because we are understaffed, it says in the report, we are struggling recruiting because there is a general kind of, you know, recruitment crisis in that particular sector. But those staff members are under a lot of pressure because they deal with people who are very angry because they've been waiting for at least twenty-eight minutes, sometimes fifty-seven minutes, sometimes longer. So when people finally speak to someone, they're really quite upset. So what are we doing to support those staff? And how do we retain them? And how do we encourage them in a very stressful kind of job? So, and also there's mention of natural language on page forty-six, introducing that. And in my experience, speaking to a machine over the phone is not something that people find particularly user friendly. In fact, I've had colleagues of work asking me to call HMRC because they don't want to go through those, jump in those groups. So we need to implement a system that is, you know, people friendly rather than council friendly. Thank you.
Right, who's going to? Yeah?
If I just start by, I think, sort of pick up the big question about how are we going to make some changes? I think that's a positive place to start that. So we have implemented a new CRM, so Customer Relationship Management System. That system is a way of helping our staff guide, respond to queries that come through. It's a way of being able to log in information, record information, access information to be able to respond. That system has been implemented, as with most system implementations in my experience, it's not been, it's not been issue free and there is still some more work to do. But we've got a modern CRM system in place now. We've implemented a new telephony system. We implemented that system, we were due to be implementing the system sort of February, February, March, as we were going into the pandemic. The system was implemented in the early months of the pandemic, which was a real game changer in terms of the contact centre's ability to work differently for some staff to be able to work remotely. We've learned a huge amount through that period, we've learned a huge amount in terms of the way that the contact centre has that to change and adapt. Some of, some of what I set out in the discussion with the transitional committee about some of the things that we need to change is we need to make the website the place to go to where customers' residents can access information that they need and that they can undertake tasks on there. We've done a lot of customer research over the years and one of the things that we've established is is about sixty percent of people that actually pick up the phone to go to the contact centre have tried to do something on the web first and have been unable to do so. So if we can make the web the place to go to and they can do what they need to do, that starts to, that starts to reduce call volumes. We know that we get about thirty percent, and there is an element of guesstimate in that, so apologies, but we get about thirty percent of people who are calling the contact centre because they are calling back for some particular reason. They're calling back because we haven't responded to their query first time and they feel the need to call back. They're calling back to chase an appointment with somebody. And again, we've got to, we've got to look at actually getting things right first time. That's, that's the services that the contact centre connects with, having better connections and actually getting those services right first time so that people are not having to call us back. We deal with a large volume of appointment bookings, we need to make appointment booking processes easier, slicker. You know, it shouldn't have to be a case of somebody making a phone call to arrange an appointment. So I think there's a range of things there that we need to do. But fundamentally, what we need to put front and centre is that connection with customers and we need to start to design services around their needs. One of the things that I said in the presentation to the transitional committee was that we've, we've designed too many services around what, the way that the council currently works or how particular services currently work. And we've not really thought about that from a customer perspective. I don't think anybody in the council wants to create a system or a process that they think doesn't work for customers. But I don't think they're thinking about the design of some of those things from the right perspective. So we need to get people involved at an earlier stage, we need to listen to what it is would meet their needs. We need to recognise that people are often contacting the council where they've got a range of different issues and we need to be able to respond to multiple queries in one go. And I think you impart your point about actually recognising that, you know, people are often contacting the council because they're in dire straits, they're in real need and we need to be able to ensure that those people are able to get through. Some of this is, you know, I sit here and sometimes think, well, the easy answer would be just to get a lot more staff in the contact centre. That's, that's probably not affordable and it's probably not the right long term solution. In fact, I'm convinced it's not the right long term solution. The right longer term solution is to, is actually to make some of the changes I've outlined. The shorter term solution is to do some of what the report actually in front of you outlines, which actually is to, is to go through the recruitment processes and to get some more people in and trained so that we can just deal with this in the short term. Because to answer your point of your question, I can't imagine that some of the changes that I'm talking about in terms of new webs, new processes, end to end service design, customer engagement. end-to-end service design, customer engagement, some of those things are going to take a year, probably longer, to be honest with you. Natural language, I think, is part of the solution, but it's not something that we're putting all of our hopes on. And I think we need to, we need to recognise that it's something that most contact centres make some use of and I'm sure it's got a place for us. I think we need to work out what its role and place is. I don't think we're going into this thinking that this is something that we put right at the front end of the contact centre and that as soon as people are making a call, they are getting straight through to an automated natural language system, which will just redirect their call somewhere else. But I think it, it probably does have a use as part of the overall system that we create. We do think a lot about the support we provide to staff, so to pick up, to pick up that point. Yeah, our staff have done a fantastic job during the pandemic. They've, they've adapted and coped and changed the way that they've worked, often, often daily. They've had to deal with a lot. And, and you're right, when performance dips, they're often the ones at the, at the front end of that, dealing with, with individual frustration. We've got some, we've got some fantastic service managers, Colleen in front of you today. She's one of the service managers there that is, is in there supporting our staff and doing all we can to, to make sure that staff feel supported. We have team leaders, we have supervisors that staff can turn to for advice and support. I think we try to operate a, a contact centre which, which thinks very carefully about the wellbeing of our staff and makes sure that they have personal development, training, breaks within the day, an opportunity for team meetings. Sorry, final point, revenues and benefits. I mean, there have been longstanding issues around revenues and benefits, call wait times. The performance is all, we've, we've always struggled with performance around revenues and benefits. I would say some of the reasons for that are in relation to the nature of the queries that we get, which are, as you know yourself, are, are often very complex in nature, meaning that the, the call itself is, is longer in duration. The staff who we, we, we know that revenues calls are more complicated and are of more specialist in nature, therefore, we, we try to put staff that are knowledgeable and skilled at the end of those phone calls, which means that we don't have as large a pool of staff that we can draw from. The way that the contact centre operates is it's, we are teaming and ladling staff and moving them from one part of the council service to another to try and mix, as I say, peaks and troughs. We've to my big peaks and peaks in demand because there are very few troughs. It's, it's much more difficult to do that with revenues and benefits. But, but again, the, the answer, I think, isn't about trying to deal with in a reactive way to actually revenues and benefits queries. I think the answer is a longer-term process change in terms of how we deal with these types of queries. I, I think I've picked off all of your questions, but apologies if I've missed anything in that response.
Angela?
Thank you. Just regarding the website, you know, you've mentioned the website to be webby and it's true. I find the website really difficult to navigate myself as well. But I had this same conversation in July two thousand and nineteen, in my first meeting on this committee. So here we are at the end of twenty twenty one and we're still in the same place. The website is still unchanged. So how long is it going to take?
The website isn't unchanged, we have made some progress, but it's not where it needs to be. So I think, let me, let me, let me acknowledge that. We've got, we're going to have to redesign the processes on the website and that's, that's not a quick fix. I'm not going to, I'm not going to commit to specific timescales here because the answers to those span multiple services. I think part of, part of what we need to agree with the approach that we're taking going forward and part of the ongoing conversation that was agreed at the Transitional Committee is that we'll have to work out what activity that we need to do and then we'll have to work out what the priority order ring is of that. I think the one thing that we do know very clearly is that actually making improvements to the web have significant improvement, has significant benefits, not only for those people that would prefer to interact that way. And we, you know, we, we're not, we recognise that other people don't want to interact that way. But, but if actually we can make some of the, you know, if, if sixty eight percent of people are actually going to the web first and not being able to resolve their queries, if we can, if we can reduce sixty eight percent of calls going into the contact centre, there would be no reason at all why we're not getting somewhere near to the performance levels that you would all expect and that I expect.
Thank you. That was a really, what's that I'm looking for? Detailed. A no holds barred, you know, reply, thank you. Josie?
Thank you, Chair. I'm really struggling to know how to put this because my knowledge is not just as a councillor, it's also as a former employee and as a representative of the staff in the contact centre. So I do have a lot of sympathy actually with the members of staff in the contact centre. And I've heard everything you've said and obviously we're going to take that at face value. The thing that concerns me is that the staff, and I'll do it from the staff's perspective, have been promised many systems in the past. They've been, I don't know how many systems they've had in, but there's at least three that I know of. When they first took away the two to three people we used to have down in a little office downstairs and actually put it into a call centre, down to Atlas Court, to bringing it back in, to merging, all sorts of things. And they've always been promised jam tomorrow and it's always been systems that are going to deliver this for them and it's always going to be easier and we don't need the staff. And then there was all the systems changes when you brought Sheffield Homes in and they were merged in as well. So it does concern me that you've got yet another system that's promising future improvements. And, and I do know this is one of the things that councillors get the most complaints about. I had somebody ringing me up extremely concerned that they'd got a house they were selling and they were worried about a council tax bill and they'd been given a full year council tax bill and they wanted advice for it. And they ended up in a county claims court and they came on to me because they were worried that they'd now get a bad debt rating because they've got a county court judgment. And that's because they tried to get through on the web, they tried to get through on the phone. They came down in person and that's another thing that we need to acknowledge with this because it comes under the same management structure, is that then people are turning up in person because they can't get through remotely. And people that have never seen the inside of Howden House and some of the problems that the staffing there have to cope with, I've seen a whole different world as well. They came back to me and they just couldn't believe. And I know it was the pandemic, you probably had less staff, but you still had increased demand on the service. But you've got all that as well and the staff, not only on the telephones are dealing with that, but the staffing person in, are dealing with that. And I just go back to this and I do wonder if you are adequately staffed, whether the staff that are on test and track have actually come back. And again, going back all those years, I remember going in there, you'd got the tele, the television showing all the calls, how many waiting and all the rest. You were, you were planning your staff. I'm calling it timetables because I can't, rotas. You were planning your staff rotas to do peak times, you were doing that down at Atlas Court, supposedly tracking, because you had staff on very flexible contracts so that supposedly they would come in when you'd got the peaks and you'd have less staff on when there was troughs. And, and that's quite right, if, if you've got the technology that actually tracks that because then you're getting the best performance out of your staff. It does worry me because I'm, I'm talking going back nearly, nearly twenty years and we've been promised system after system, but I'm take, take you on first value. And again, July to September of this year, only forty two percent answered. So I'm asking about the staff. The seven from Track and Trace, the four vacancies because of revenues and benefits have got those. And you are recruiting, but I do wonder how many you're recruiting and how long they're going to be. And again, you're going to have extended hours, but it's considered where back office support can be secured. I mean, surely we should be ensuring that back office staff can be secured. And again, you're merging your telephone queues by cross-skilling and staff and redeploying with your CRM systems, but you've always had scripts ever since you've had a modern telephone system, since you plucked the three women out of the ground floor office. You've always trained people on scripts, as they were then called, which is your CRM. And the greater joining up between revs and bens, revenues and benefits, will provide an opportunity. It, it concerns me that it's not. But I do also recommend, and I've lost track of time, I can't remember when Capita came in. So there will be some disjoint, disjointment there because Capita will have had their systems and you need to bring them in on the council system. So you've got a lot of things where you've been forever bringing people in. If it's like all the little departments saying many years ago when it was Julie Bullen and Jo, Jo Hallam, to bringing in Sheffield Homes, to bringing in Capita. And it's, and I, I just hear everything you're saying. Can you give us the numbers of your recruitment? Can you assure us that you've actually got the right numbers? Because if not, now's your chance to tell us. And I'm not promising that we can find money, but we need, if this problem's been going on for that many years, we need to break that cycle and maybe talk to the people that are buying you all these systems and are the promising, promising you things the systems can't deliver. So you reassure us you've got the right system this time.
There's a, there's a leading question. No, I understand totally. I mean, I think I've been through, you know, would have, would have been quite a couple of challenging conversations now about performance, understandably, given where we're at. And despite that, I think the fact that, that, that members, what, put staff at the forefront of their minds, I think is, is, is really important to me, recognising the great job that they do, recognising the difficult circumstances people are working in. And, and, you know, fundamentally kind of wanting to make sure that we, we set up systems that both, you know, meet our customers' needs but actually also support our staff. So I think that, that's a, you know, it's a welcome development. Look, the systems, the systems that we've got have got the capability to do things better than we are currently doing, but we haven't fully rolled out all of the, the, the capability of those systems yet. And I think I'm, I'm, I'm trying really hard not to sit here and promise, promise everything tomorrow because, because I've been through numerous system developments that don't always deliver in the way that we want them to. I think the, the thing that, the thing that I would say, two things I would probably say actually in response to this, that the, you know, the coun, the council is working through a process of, of prioritisation through, through the kind of the, the, the one-year planning process. And there, there are four strands of customer service improvement on that plan still. They've got to, you know, hopefully they will stay on that plan because there's a lot of priorities on that plan and there's a lot of things that the council's got to wrestle with in light of the current budget position. But those, those four developments would make best use of the technology that we've got currently available as well as looking at system improvement from end to end. And they are looking at things like customer payments and, and benefits. So look across the revenue strands as well as repairs and maintenance. So, but it, it's not just looking at from the contact centre perspective, it's looking at how the contact centre connects with the revenue services. So where we are, you know, where, where, where the report talks about extended opening hours and connection with back office staff, that's about, that's about making sure that if the contact centre opens on a weekend so that we can smooth some of the peaks that we get on a Monday morning as soon as the phone lines are open, you know, if we can take some of those calls on, on Saturday, Sunday, we've got to make sure that there are people in the, in the repair service that we can, we can pass those calls on so we can do something with them. So, and, and some of that's, some of that short-term improvement is what the report is talking about. Am I asked Colleen, if she knows, to, to tell me where we're at in terms of the recruitment issues and perhaps share something in terms of some of the adaptations we've had to make around recruitment and, and training and induction? Okay.
Yeah, you're right, Jos, we've been on quite a journey over the last few years with systems and with people. But one of the things we have been doing is actively recruiting into the vacancies. You are right that we did take a number of people to Track and Trace. They are currently still with Track and Trace, as you may be aware. The numbers haven't dropped with the Covid, so they're still there fighting that and defending that line. But we are recruiting into those vacancies, short-term. The problem has been that it has been difficult to attract people on short-term contracts because the demand for this kind of staff is absolutely, you know, unprecedented. We keep using that word, but it is unprecedented. So number one, to attract them has been difficult. However, we have also asked all our part-time staff to extend their hours internally as well to help with that. And we have been successful in recruiting people to backfill these vacancies. I haven't got those numbers because I'm not actually in charge of the call centre now. So sorry, I haven't brought those numbers with me, but we are actively on with that. Notwithstanding, we have also adapted the recruitment process to make sure that we do attract quality, calibre staff to those roles, but do it more fluidly, more quickly, and also shorten the training time for those staff. Coming back to Angela's point about revs and bens, I'd just like to clarify that, yes, these are the most complex inquiries within the call centre. They take a long time to fully resolve. But I think in present, pre, previous surveys with, with citizens and customers, they've said once they get through, they actually get a good service, it's the getting through that's the issue. So we, we pride ourselves on dealing with quality once they get through, but we acknowledge that waiting times are too long. So what do we need to do? We will be kicking off a process of projects under Mark's governance in the new year. One of those is to look at the natural language, web chat and some other technical stuff that can help it. However, that's caveated because we are, we are looking at that with a more considered approach because it's not one thing fixes, fixes everything. But what we want to do, we need to get rid of the transactional, quick-time inquiries that can perhaps be moved on to the web and resolved, not for everyone, but for a majority of our citizens, so that we can then deal with the more complex inquiries that are coming into the call centre. That is the skill, to get rid of the quicker, you know, easier transactional stuff on to the web so that people who can access the web can do that and then we've got capacity within the call centre to deal with those most complex inquiries. And that's going to, we need a, a fresh look, a fresh pair of eyes at these ongoing persistent areas so that we can then address it with the technological changes that may assist that. For example, natural language could direct a call, calls about rent balances. They're, they're quite basic, natural language can cope with things like that. But we won't put that everywhere, if you like. We'll target areas where we feel it can be dealt with much better and will be to the benefit of everyone and to the next person waiting in that queue. So there's some of the strategies. As for recruitment, we hope that when Track and Trace is finished, those staff will also come back to us. And we are negotiating with the managers in that area to make sure that that's a smooth transition back in or not. But we will be making sure that we, we are maximising the staff that are there. Can I also comment on the welfare of staff? Our staff are really well looked after, in my opinion. We do our best to, to, to really serve them, if you like, as managers. And through the pandemic, that's been crucial. And, and we've, we've hoped, we make sure we have regular one-to-ones while they're at home and such like. But the point I wanted to address was, our attrition is not often because they don't like being in a call centre because people think of call centres like chicken coops where it's all not very nice. Actually, our call centre is a really nice place to work. They leave because they get promoted into other areas of the council because they are so well-equipped on all these, you know, up to, I think we've got nearly twenty services that should we service within the call centre. They are so well, you know, they know it, so that they are promoted to, I don't know, housing offices and, you know, other stuff that goes on in the council. And that's where we lose our people to, not that they would go in, oh, I hate working in a call centre and I'm leaving somewhere else. So I just wanted to qualify that because people are happy. Don't get me wrong, there are some unhappy ones, we work with them. But they're actually quite happy and they progress throughout the organisation. So we pride ourselves on that. What we just need to do is find some way of making sure that the, and continuing to make sure that the recruitment process is slick and that it's secure and that we get the right calibre staff and we train them quickly and well.
Thank you. We just wish them well and hopefully you can come back to some future meeting with much better figures, I hope. Thank you. Marouf, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of what I was going to ask or comment on, Josie and Angela have done. I mean, I think, I think the issue here is, if it's quite simply, I mean, Josie referred to her time as an officer here, I was an officer here as well. And I've been here, hearing these stories about the call centre and dealing with people's inquiries for probably the last 10, 15, 20 years, probably longer. And that's one of the key areas that we needed to address. I mean, in terms of the tensions and the heightened tension that people feel and the anxiety that they feel when they actually make that call. And I'll just take, for example, council tax as an example. And we all get inquiries directly to members about the reaction time to queries on, on that subject. They'll, they'll get a letter, they can't afford to pay it or there's some discrepancy in the council tax and they, they get this letter which says, if you don't pay within 10 days, we will be taking legal proceedings against you. Most law-abiding citizens get really worried about it and really tense and anxious about it. First thing they do is pick up the telephone and then you listen for the next 45, 50 minutes. Nothing happens. They try again the following day, they keep trying and then eventually they turn up at the, the, the centre at Houghton House and, and, and they explain it to somebody. And I, and I have great sympathy for the people they actually explain it to because they have a, a limited knowledge of, of, of certain cases and a limited knowledge of what they can actually support them with because they need to take it a little bit deeper to other offices behind, behind the scenes. But if they get that far, sometimes they end up with a magistrate's court notice and, and that causes even more anxiety. And I've known people who have actually turned up, gone into a car or turned, got onto a bus, turned up at the centre just to say, look, please, don't take me to court. I've never been to court, I don't want a, a debt written against me. And you're the council, you're supposed to be nice to me. And, and, and can you do something about this? And the fact is, they can't. So they go back and they haven't got the answer that they required, they have a very stressful night. They try again in the morning again. And this is a scenario that repeats itself time and time again. And that's the sort of things that we as councillors have to sort of react to because that's the next line of inquiry and we are generally, tend to be available most of the time. So those are the, those are the tensions and anxieties that you're dealing with when you're talking about these things. I mean, call me a little bit old-fashioned here, I might be going back in time. But in, many years ago, if it was revenues and benefits, they had a dedicated line themselves that you actually called and you might get a benefits officer or a revenues officer that actually understood the whole process and was able to deal with that situation. I know it's gone to a call centre and, and that can be quite superficial in many ways, the, the sort of response that people get back, with all good intentions. I'm not saying the intention isn't there. The intention is certainly there to be helpful once you get through, but that there's a limited amount of information that they can give and sometimes it's deeper than that. And, and sometimes people come to us and say they've been told that somebody will ring them back from, directly from a department and that call never comes back. And then you come back on to yourselves again, try the email, nothing happens. And, and it's time and time again. And this is from a, another authority, dare I say. When the Houghton House was first set up, other local authorities came here to see how wonderful Sheffield was doing in dealing with issues in, in a central point. And I, I remember that happening and to, and I, and I, and I thank you for your honesty because without honesty, we can't move forward. We could, we could, we could sort of sugarcoat this and make it sound better, but it isn't. And, and I think Josie raised the point earlier, what is it that you need that we need to support you with? We may not be able to offer it, but we certainly need to because this is frontline stuff. When people get deeper into the system, that's fine, you can deal with it. So I, I think, I think it's something urgent needs to be done around this because it's the most vulnerable people that seem to suffer the most in, in these circumstances. And just moving on from that slightly, if I moved on to the business community now, and I think it'd be wrong of me not to mention that either. Planning is, is, is an absolute nightmare to get through to. And I know that's not part of your call centre stuff, but it's still an interaction with the local authority. And many, many times I've been told they've tried to get hold of planning officers or the planning inquiries. And I can honestly say, I don't, I don't think I've ever got through to planning inquiries and somebody's answered the actual telephone. So there are, there are, there are deep-rooted problems in the system that we as members have to sort of front quite a number of times. And when we do speak to officers, we do get decent answers. I know there's no question here, but I thought it was important that we needed to make these comments because this is the forum to do so. So thank you for giving me the time, Chair, because I don't want to go on too long. And, and, and I've said what I need to, but my colleagues have obviously summarised it far better than I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Marouf. What I was going to, sorry, Alison, I know you're waiting, just give me a second. I was going to suggest actually that we've had lots of wide-ranging comments from colleagues and also some very in-depth answers. And I want to thank Colleen in particular for her robust defence of her staff. And can you not train them so well, please? Because we don't want them going off somewhere else. But what I was going to suggest was, all the questions and comments that we've had, can we refer them through to the cabinet member so that she has a flavour of what has been discussed here? Because if she is doing this piece of work herself in conjunction with Jill, obviously, a flavour from here will be helpful. Sorry, Alison. Try not to be too long. My comment is around the content of the report and the information that it provides to this committee in order for them to understand the problem and to try to suggest some solutions. And I think that there are some omissions there, particularly the performance relating to website inquiries. And particularly, perhaps we could include something about benchmarking against other organisations to see how, how the scale of the problem in Sheffield compares with other, other similar organisations, perhaps both council and, and private sector. And the question, the other comment I've got is around the section on improvements and possible future developments. I personally would like to see some time scales in there for action and some sort of action plan, some targeting and so that council can, committee can actually see progress is being made. And I think there's some omissions there in the possible future developments. The website improvements are not mentioned at all in there. So it's just some suggestions for future reports. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alison. Do you want to just comment?
Yeah, thank you. I think what I'd say with that is, I mean, I think the report responds to the information that was asked for. I think there is a question about where this wider conversation sits in terms of the, the kind of the governance of the organisation and in terms of whether that would be more appropriate for, for a scrutiny committee or, or even possibly one of the transitional committees, although I know they're, they're not, they're still taking shape. So I, I think the report aimed to just do what it was asked to be, to be blunt and not necessarily get, get into that wider conversation, although that wider conversation is, is really important. And not but comment and respond to previous comments in terms of just how, you know, I think the, the, the comments made are just highlighting how important it is that we get these things right as the organisation. Because there's no, there's, you know, we, we shouldn't be putting residents through the kind of experiences you've just outlined.
Okay, thank you. I think that's been a really robust and thoughtful discussion. Again, thank you to the officers who've taken all this and responded. That, that's real professionalism, isn't it? When you come back and we, we, we feel that you've listened to us. So thank you very much. As I think, if we can pass this on to councillor McDonald and, and see what happens in the future. We'll look forward to hearing about it. Gillian.
So our next item is the Member Development Progress Report. This is you, Gillian, right. Right, I'm just going to say before, before Gillian starts, something that we did discuss at our pre-meeting was about following what happened to David Amis MP, something that has concerned us and which Angela has actually raised in the past. It's about safety for councillors when we're going about our duties. And we did ask if we can have a look particularly at councillor safety and also conflict resolution so that we can fight, when we find ourselves in those situations when we want to de-escalate something that may be happening, either in a meeting or on the phone indeed. Because I think when everybody's been talking about the safety of MPs, there are actually 20,000 councillors in this country who are also going out and holding surgeries and going to visit people in their homes to answer casework queries. And we want to make sure that all those people are, are kept safe. And I include in that also our staff, who often have to go and deal with quite difficult situations. And we want to make sure that at all times, people who are associated with public service are kept as safe as they can be. I'll pass over to Jill.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, very, very important point and something that's become, they're real for councillors again over the last couple of weeks. We, we did put some particular effort into providing guidance and assistance and training for elected members after the Joe Cox murder a few years ago, I think it was 2017. The police helped us with that and that's something that we could look at again. If, within the report, clause 3.6, personal safety and conflict resolution are already there as things that members have highlighted as being something that they would like training on. So, so yes, very, very much so, that, that will be included within the programme and we'll, we'll try and bring that forward so that we can make sure that members feel comfortable. There is always advice available. There's also good, some good guidance on the LGA website that's available to members immediately as well. Thank you, Chair. The, the report that, sorry, the committee asked for an update on member development progress. This report sets out what, what we've, what we've done this year and what, what we're planning to do. So it, it starts by talking about the type of member development that I class as standard. So induction, that's rolled out every year for new members, training that's specific to committees that's rolled out every year. It's true to say that over the past few years, we haven't had too much of a focus on member development due to the fact that we've had, not really had a member of staff who, who's had that responsibility with something that was removed from the department as part of a response to the cuts some years ago. So it's, but, but what we've done this year is make sure that we've got some additional resource into, to help with that. The other thing that we've got as well this year is assistance from the Local Government Association. So they are working with us as we transition to a committee system and have offered us a year's support on member development. With those sessions have started and have, some have been for the political groups, working with the political groups, some have been for members generally. And we are developing that, that programme for the rest of the, that runs until May 22. We also have introduced local area committees this year and therefore a series of training has been made available to support members and officers who are working with the communities and working with local area committees and that local governance being, getting used to working in that, that sort of system. And then finally, the transition to committee system of itself requires a programme of training and development for both members and officers. So, so it's, there's quite a lot going on this year. What, what we are trying to do while we've got that additional resource, so we've got it as a temporary resource this year, is to get, we've got a member working group together, we've got a member development site that's been developed and we'll make sure that that, members are aware of that and it's used to, best of our ability, to keep information up to date and in one place for members. Also, we'll get a strategy and plan done so that we've got something at least to, to help us in future years with regard to that. That's, I think that's all I want to say. Thank you, Chair.
Angela.
Thank you, Jill, for that. I just want to say before I am commenting on this that I did attend the LGA safety training a few months back, can't remember what it was, and it was really, really good, it was excellent. So I would recommend it for other, particularly for female councillors, but not only female councillors. There was quite a lot about social media safety as well as in-person safety and how to keep safe in general. So it was very, very interesting. In terms of the, it, it's fantastic that we've got so much training and there's so much going on and that we now have a dedicated member of staff that is looking after this because there is, you know, it does make a difference. And I have a little concern about how low the attendance at the induction was for new councillors. But I understand, you know, if, if there is only one offer of that particular training at only one time, it could be that people can't take time off work or whatever and it doesn't suit. So maybe, I, I'm not aware whether there was an option. And also, I mean, the attendance in general doesn't seem to be very high. But then again, lots of the training that has been put on since, you know, we've started properly this year has been on my workday, so I haven't personally been able to attend many. So it would be good if there was an option to either have a different time if it was put on more than once or if it could be recorded so that people can watch it later, watch it, you know, and record that they've done that training. And yeah, I'm really excited about the developments and I know that there's going to be more things. And the LGA training is really high-quality, so if, you know, other members, I think we should encourage people to try to do it.
I was going to say that we actually do have the LGA finance trainer coming to do a session for us as the audit committee, which I think, is it the 16th of November-ish? It's in November. And Angela and I have actually been to some sessions where he did some work for people who are members of audit committees and we really rated him. He actually made us feel quite clever by the end that we actually understood audit. Well, Angela did, I did a bit.
Thank you, Chair. On the induction training dates, they're, they're fixed before the election and we tend to try and put them at the same time every year. So, so it's the following, the week following the election. And we let all candidates know in advance so that they can try and make those, that time available. If they don't manage to get to that induction, I do do the personal, I do the induction personally with them. But they, they then have to go to each individual part of that induction training to get that training. So it is made available, but it's not as easy because we actually put everything into two days. Whereas if they, if they can't make that, it, it is actually more difficult for them to do. Open to suggestions on what we might do about that. I think giving advanced notice to new councillors is probably about the best we can do. Sometimes the take-up is because the councillors who are appointed, elected, thank you. The councillors elected, have been councillors previously, so they're not new councillors. So they think, they don't need the induction. I would say every councillor should come to the induction when they, they are re-elected. But I, I know that sometimes the numbers are low because they are re-elected councillors, so they, they don't attend. Options on times and recording, yeah, I mean, we, we welcome your feedback on that. We'll never be able to satisfy every councillor, but, but we are open to, to hearing from you as to whether early evening is better. We'll never be able to satisfy every councillor, but we are open to hearing from you as to whether early evening is better for some councillors. And we can say, I mean, it depends on the training provider, but usually there's flexibility around that. Similarly with recordings, if we can get a recording of the training, then great. Some training providers, you know, aren't particularly happy about that. And also, if it was a session in person, recording that, that might make the councillors who are involved in that feel a little bit uncomfortable perhaps. So it'd be on that, I wouldn't be able to say every session would be recorded, but it's certainly a good principle to think about making recordings available after the event, if it is at all possible. Thank you, Chair.
I think the Member Development Officer at Bradford put together a series of CDs. Because one of the members was a long distance lorry driver, of which we now know there is a shortage. But at the time, this driver would drive along in his cab, listening to his member development CD. So I'm sure there are sort of lots of other ways, whether we can do podcasts or downloads or, I don't understand any of this, but I understand that they are very popular.
And we'll see what we can do about some podcasts.
And sorry, and finally, I've had a request about the equality, diversity and inclusion training. That that should be part of the mandatory training for members and along with planning, licensing, et cetera. Because it is clearly something of major importance in our multicultural and diverse city.
I agree. And it's been made mandatory for officers, so I think being mandatory for members would be also the right thing for us to be doing. I need your support as elected members in making that mandatory, because as to whether a member decides or takes up that training. I can't stop them being a councillor because they haven't done the training. So I need the groups to help me with that and to promote it from within the groups. So your support on that would be helpful. Other areas of mandate to retrain is such as planning, for example, a little bit more control, because we can say you can't sit on a committee until you've done the training. Because EDI is so generic, we haven't really got the same leverage. But yes, I completely agree. And I'm quite happy to take that forward with the whips to talk about whether that goes.
I was going to ask whether you, yeah, I see that there's a member working group and that maybe it could be raised there.
Yes, Chair, thank you, yeah.
In which case, just thank you very much and long may it continue. If we move on to our final item, before we do that, I'm just going to whip back to the minutes, just so that we can peg on to it. On page 11 of the minutes, we agreed external audit re-procurement. And I think that Dave wanted to explain what happens next, that it has to go to various other places.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the committee will remember that we took a report on external audit procurement to the last committee. And agreed that we would opt for using probably separate audit appointments again. That decision now has to be ratified by full council, that's a statutory requirement, not one of ours. I've drafted up a report and discussed it with the Chair to take that forward for full council. I've sort of tentative suggested that it's a report of the Chair of the committee. And I wondered whether the committee wanted to make it bipartisan by having it seconded by one of the opposition members or one of the other members, rather than, I'm looking at Simon here. So that it's clearly not a political decision, it's a non-political decision. And then hopefully, I'm expecting, well, I'm rather hoping it'll be nodded through council in January, because it's not one that should be contentious. Thank you.
I'm considering it, I'll have to second it.
Working with you is such a pleasure, councillor Andrew Jones. Agenda item 10, the work programme for the committee. I see that we have at our next meeting, Mr. Jones, Andrew Jones, is coming back to update us on the education healthcare plan. Which is something you mentioned earlier, Simon, and I know is very dear to you as well, Marouf. And in January, we'll hope to have the housing ombudsman report, if it's come through. Now, one thing I was just going to say is that next Tuesday, there will be a meeting of the considerations subcommittee. And as we know, that that has been looking at a particular case, which has been somewhat in the media as well. That we might ask for some sort of report to come following that, looking at what went well, what didn't go well. And how we can improve that particular process in the future. Is that within our remit? Jill?
Chair, I think the committee had previously asked for a workshop and I was thinking that we were setting something up separately, sorry. We've got something, 16th of November.
That means that isn't the workshop on audit?
Okay, so that's why I had the 16th in my brain. Sorry.
So we have a workshop set up with the committee to talk through how we deal with the complex complaints. So it is a closed workshop, it's not open to the public. We can discuss at that workshop as to whether there is something that we then want to bring to a future meeting. So can I ask members, if they really can, to come to that? Because I think it's an important issue, which has, I think, been of concern to all members of the council. Are there any other issues on the work programme that people want to raise? We all content with the, as it is? Okay, in which case, can I thank you all very much for coming? And a safe journey home.